You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 8th, 2023 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Okay, I'll stand with what? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation's front line in this war with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That's because of, um, that's an attorney. Okay, John, could you please do your attendance? I don't agree. Present. I see Michael Martinez is absent, or is he in? He is absent. Ralph Fox from San Jackson.
Present.
Rich Young, Myville. Fratton and Adamski.
Present.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix. He's not here. Police Chief Marks was dead.
Present.
Thank you. Fire Department President Gene Paxton. Absent. And President Manful, uh, for the.
Absent.
BZA, he's absent. Ringo Rizos, absent. Fire Commission President Ralph Fox, we know you're here. And where in sight's in that that mile is now sun.
In good.
And Road Commissioner Bob Zokowski.
You're.
Good.
Okay, thank you very much, John. Um, at this point in our meeting, I'd like to, uh, remind that all remotely participating, um, participants of the meeting, uh, please be advised that what you should be doing when you log on is identify yourself so that Ralph can make note of who it is that's participating at our meeting, um, as well when it's going to be time. If you do make any kind of comments, you must again identify yourself by name publicly, not loud, to everyone, your name and your address here in Michiana Shores before you start addressing whatever issues that you have. So, uh, thank you very much for that and, uh, do not be offended. We ask you to identify yourself, any of you who are potentially on and, and we can't see but number of names, then please let us know. Thanks. Um, okay, let us move on to adopting the meeting agenda. Okay. Okay. All right. Rich. Okay. Sam, everything's good? All right. Okay, in that case, then I need a motion to approve.
I'm not sure what we're getting there.
Okay. Second?
I will second.
Okay. Sam Paxton moved Ralph Fox seconded to approve the agenda as presented on my favor in the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, four ayes have it. Thank you.
I was saying.
Uh, it was Sam and Ralph.
Thanks.
Okay, in that case, we are now, uh, moving on to approving the minutes of the July 11th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Uh, I think I have, I think around six thirty.
Okay. Oh, Sam and Ralph and Rich? Okay, any comments, any corrections? Do you need a minute to review, Rich?
Yes.
No? Okay. Uh, if there are no comments or corrections to the minutes, then, um, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Ralph, are you still in? Just giving to.
I'm just gonna stay because it's gonna take me a while.
Okay. All right, so then we have Sam Paxton moved to approve. I need a second.
Second.
Rich Young seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. So three ayes, one absent. Okay. Thank you. We're similar. Then to the reports from committees officers and the clerk treasurer. So, John, please.
Okay. Well, starting with the first word in the July edition of vouchers, leave you all background the other because you follow through with time rating of. Low business account, um, screws and washers with use for the road commission by the road commission of five dollars and ninety-five cent. Baker chili for services for additional appropriation and point twenty-four budget that's just today, um, that four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents. In their group for insurance for the director's officer, it's from August budget until next year, July thirty-third, five thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. AT&amp;T for telephone and internet, seventy-nine fifty-three. J C Card services for Adobe, twenty-one thirty-nine. And Microsoft, twenty-five dollars. Bradley Damski for Regal's. That's not right. Well, anyway, I, we show for, uh, town meetings and opening of the bids, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cent. For way over review, correction, and document prepare letter, comments, and order of order of order, the barister, uh, that was seventy dollars. Briefing and associates. Four hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents for mobility, um, Brad Damski, and Munson, and fifty. Six, uh, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Nepco, thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents for electric light for the garage, street lights, sixteen sixty, and seventy dollars and fifty-two cents for, uh, gas, which is for the heat in the garage. How about seven thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-six cents?
Anyone question for Khan? Yeah, okay. Uh, in that case, I need, uh, a motion to approve the vouchers. Okay, Rich Young. I need a second.
Okay.
Okay, Sam Paxton seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, four ayes. Okay. Motion pass.
Okay. You want to read the next one? You can. Start signing or follow me through. This is for, say, July thirty-first, April. The grand total of three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. I did not send that three hundred and ninety-five cents.
Well, you got it. You'll just sign it.
Three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Thank you. Okay.
You can read it if you go live. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer.
We're going to. No, she didn't. All right. Ralph, uh, you want to approve the vouchers? I need a second. Unless you have some questions on it? No?
I haven't seen it, so.
Yeah, come your way. If you don't see, I'm gonna give you a page.
I understand. Will they come in our way or?
Yeah, come in your way. I, I want to write them here to second it so that.
They can do that afterwards.
Yeah, they almost signed it because they'd like to see it.
Yeah.
They did it. They liked it. Something, um, you know, I'm sorry. Let us, um, let's not, you know, say that. All we want to do is take a look and see if it's perfectly appropriate. Thank you, John. Okay, all right. Here, take a look at it and we'll send it back to John and then we'll start it. Signing, we pass.
Send it back before you sign it.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little. Okay, so. But don't sign it yet, just take a look. How about Rich? Give a copy to Rich. Did we see the same group?
There's a copy.
You have a copy more?
No, you have a lot. That's not the issue. Okay, nobody gets that.
The only thing I like to see.
Uh, you.
I didn't see one page from you today.
Yeah, that's how I did, I was unconscious.
I didn't have the first page, but you were able to blow it out.
Yeah.
Right off.
Anonymous did.
You didn't, I don't, we're, we're, no, just August 8th is the only one that was attached.
That's why I'm really.
To the August 8th.
All right, it's on the stack. If you don't know, sign it again. It's gonna initial some of it down top and then do this. Thank you very much. Good to be going, John. Here's this one. Okay.
We need a second on that.
Yeah, we will. Okay. Any need a second on this?
I hear it.
All right, same text. Ralph Fox, hold on. Ralph Fox moved to agree. Sam Paxton seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four ayes. Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, let's move on to the third document, John. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, on the August day, voucher summary. We have the town of Long Beach for police protection, five thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Office stood, office depot for printer ink for the photo punishment officer, forty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Office depot for ink cartridge for the fuel and pack of printer. We have two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Republic services for garbage pickup, four thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Department of Water Works for water in K K Park, nine dollars and thirty-six cents. AT&amp;T Mobility, seventy dollars and forty-five cents. AT&amp;T for telephone and internet for August, eighty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Comcast for internet, a hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents. Network for lighting, three times three, hundred and seventy-five dollars. Brenda Heckman for travel, two and present post office in the bank, seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Access La Porte County for video checking for five hundred dollars. Michiana Shore found to a fire department, thirty thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents. That is for, uh, fire protection. Network for moving the trail, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, network again for trail maintenance, had cut down the river tree, which has it on the path. They chopped a maple tree and two large branches cut down and removed everything, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Department of Water Works for the water, uh, at the garage, nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Grand total of fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Questions? Comments?
I make a motion to approve this.
Okay, I need a second. All right, Ralph Fox. We'll take some Sam Paxton seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or ayes, motion has carried. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is that it for them?
That's for the vouchers. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Um. All right, let us move on to, uh, resolutions and ordinances. I need a second. Okay. I'll just keep this on the side.
Okay.
Okay. Um. The resolution to that, the La Porte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, you all, hopefully everybody remembers what this was. Right? And, um, have had time to review it and are assured that everything is signed. So I will just read this resolution by, I believe, here we go. We've got, uh, it's not very long, but we just wanted. We have. Here we go. Uh, a resolution of the town of Michiana Shores, Indiana, adopting the La Porte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, April 2023. Uh, whereas the county commissioner has recognized the threat that natural hazards posed to people and property within La Porte County, and whereas the emergency management agency has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan, hereby known as La Porte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, April 2023, in accordance with federal laws, including the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act as amended, the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty-eight is amended, and the National Dam Safety Program Act as amended. And whereas La Porte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, April 2023, identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce and eliminate long-term risk to people and property in the town of Michiana Shores from the impacts of future hazards and disasters, and whereas the adoption of the county commissioner demonstrates its commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the La Porte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, April 2023. Now therefore be resolved by the county of La Porte, Indiana, that section one, in accordance with the town of Michiana Shores, the Michiana Coast Town Council adopts the La Porte County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, April 2023. While content related to La Porte County may require revision to meet the plan approval requirements, changes occurring after adoption will not require La Porte County to re-adapt any further iterations of the plan. Subsequent plan updates following the approval period for this plan will require separate adoption resolutions. If there are no comments or questions, then I need a motion to approve this resolution, 2023. Uh, John, do we have a number for that?
Yes, that, um, those six.
Okay, thank you. Those six.
I make a motion to approve this motion. We can't come to this.
Okay, Ralph Fox has moved to approve. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, Sam Paxton seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four ayes. The, uh, uh, resolution has been approved and adopted.
Do you have clean copies of it for the signing?
I have one.
Did you get one?
I did, Ralph.
Okay, we need to be signed, what we make about.
Okay, all right. We need time to sign this. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Wait, hold on. Friend, are we able to turn?
Uh, yes, it was best.
My thought is someone's greater than what happened probably.
Right, here we go. Oh. Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm, well, it's the inside of the environment. For a second reading and adoption of the revised SDR ordinance, 2023 National Five, uh, is going to be postponed until the next meeting. Uh, so that's going to be one of the biggest rule from our agenda. Departmental reports. Okay? Police Chief Marks was second.
Good evening, everyone. For month of July, Long Beach Police Department responded to three hundred and twenty-eight foster service when compared to two hundred and forty-five foster service in 2022, where increased eighty-three calls. During the month of July, twenty-two incident reports were documented, a total of thirteen individuals arrested, one felony arrest for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated with a previous conviction, a felony arrest for a vehicle pursuit, uh, which resulted in multiple drug-related offenses and actually ended in creating Michigan disorder, Michigan line. Eleven misdemeanor arrests, one for resisting law enforcement and disorderly conduct, a warrant arrest from St. Joe County Sheriff's Department, and five arrests related to traffic violations, five individuals were arrested for operating while intoxicated. Specifically to the town of Michiana Shores, um, was very quiet, which we were very thankful of. Uh, incident reports. We'd like to, um, command the La Porte County Prosecute and Attorney's Office back in July, on the twenty-sixth of July, we had the, uh, very unfortunate, um, trial of, was with John and Dennis Early, who, uh, had the way of resolve homicide last September, September first. Sheriff's Office did excellent job on a three-day trial. As a result of three-day trial, the jury was out for just a few hours, convicted Kyle Early of two counts of murder. Uh, Kyle Early will be sentenced on August eighteenth. Um, I had the pleasure of speaking with Harold Early, who is the wife to, um, Dennis Early. She's going to remain in the area until the sentencing on August eighteenth, and she was very grateful to, um, all first, uh, responders from La Porte County, specifically Long Beach Police Department, town of Michiana Shores, volunteer fire department, for everything, that everyone did, um, specifically, uh, John Early as well, because, um, the person that they ran into John Early on the Davis incident actually kept him alive for another two weeks, um, which they were very grateful of, so. Other than that, that's all I have, and we will have the radar trailer out here in the leaves. Um, if it's not already, it's.
Yeah, there is. There's not. Thank you very much, John, and we thank you for the great work that you did on that day.
All right.
You know, you know, the resolve issue there. Um, and I just did have a couple of comments that I'll bring up right now for her is that, um, we noticed, or at least I know I have noticed, that there are golf carts driving around with no lights on, and of course I can't chase them down, you know? On my, then I have noticed at least three, I mean, they're children.
Driving those golf carts. They were children. They were not teenagers, they were children.
Sixteen years.
Yes, they should, but they were driving. And then, um, I had one, uh, resident who was down near stop thirty-seven, who just asked that once in a while that the police perhaps even stop at that area, because he says, people do park down there instead of just, you know?
Yeah.
You know, wasn't, so they, you know, that was just a little request. So that's all. Thank you. Anybody else have comments? No? Thank you.
Well, I guess on the subject of golf carts, you see probably better than anyone that they just pull right through Michigan and not pull up stops.
That's true. Yeah.
It's a rarity when they stop.
Yeah.
That's a bad intersection. Well, the problem is, uh, why is it? Well, because the bikers don't stop either.
Yeah.
Bikers are gonna go, uh, someday. We, um, in the town of Long Beach, just over the weekend, we cited, um, he's probably in his mid-sixties, grandfather, he had his brain children. And that part in the back actually strapped into where the golf clubs would stay, obviously not needing seats, and, uh, our woman says that you can only carry the number of passengers from numbered seats, and he exceeded that, thought that his young brain children could be strapped in where the golf, uh, clubs usually go and actually receive ordinance violation for it, so. So we're having the same struggles in our town as well.
Okay.
So I will share that with us, Dan.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Fire Chief, oh, Bob will be doing the report for us, please. Thank you.
Well, when the fight is, uh, the chief. Hundred fifty-six point two hours spent, a different meeting on the fifth, a general meeting, fought for the business meeting, national training meeting, and the twenty-sixth meeting. On the first, we had a structural fire call on Hillside. The second, pancha train for transformer fire. The fifth, seminar for treaty down. Eighth, a form for treaty down. Michiana Drive, medical call in the eighth, and the tenth, magnitude for fire alarm. Fourteenth, pancha train for medical alarm. Fifteenth, pancha train for the fire alarm. Eighteenth, Lake Shore Drive for alarm. Nineteenth, Smith Street in Buffalo for system for a structure fire. Twenty-first, county by trail, line down. Twenty-second, magnitude trail for medical call. Twenty-second, road for medical call, same day, same medical call. Just, uh, right on later. When chop off, the line is down on the twenty-second. Twenty-third is magnitude trail for fire alarm. Twenty-fourth, Lake Shore Drive for fire alarm. Twenty-fifth, Michiana Drive for gasoline. Twenty-sixth, pancha train drive for fire alarm. Twenty-seventh, Academy Drive for, uh, medical call. Twenty-seventh, stop thirty-seventh for medical call. Twenty-eighth, Lake Shore Drive for wires down. And the thirtieth, pancha train for medical call. From Michiana Shores, we had one fire call, four first responders. Michiana, Michigan, there was nine first responders, check nine fires and three first responders, screening, there were three fires and one first responder mutually. Uh, special notes, we have three first responders who just passed the state county first responder program. Mike Chastain, Dean Andrews, and Nick Soekin.
Okay. Congratulations to them. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Any questions? No? All right, thank you very much. And let's move on to the next order, and that would be, uh, Building Commissioner, Court Enforcement Officer, Depp Chubb.
Well, you passed up the, uh, the report that you know that this was, um, not very many moments of July. Um, uh, our litigation yet, um, continued again until September. Um, this is on the three-six-oh-two Lake Shore, um, that, uh, property owner's, uh, post say, which means it gets a little more the way with the report, and so it's continued again, uh, until September. Um, and, uh, we were advised by our attorney to put, uh, sorry, uh, we had, the attorney was handling their case, to, um, put a sign up there on the properties, saying, some stairways and roadways restricted, um, so thanks for working out getting those signs. Um, I didn't hear, you know, I heard, I heard from someone, um, regarding three-six-two-one, it was relative of one of the property owner, um, and then, and now it's kind of gone silent. Um, so it was hopeful, permanent. Um, I noticed, the two notices of basement that they sent out, have now been received. I didn't, um, authorize an extension of two weeks on four hundred and twelve portal, but that has ended now, and we're, you know, I haven't been having any thoughts with that stuffs.
Okay.
Uh, and the other one, um, you know, I delivered it at the home of the homeowner, uh, owns the one house that we're complaining about, um, and there's been another home, so I left it there to make sure that it's been notified, and I have since activated that house, um, is if something maybe happening, but can't be sure. Um, and then, yeah, just a couple of S T R renewal requests, I'm sorry, renewal requests. Uh, and then, um, I am, I had heard just today, someone who was inquiring about S T R permit, and then, uh, because they're anticipating the moratorium manual, so people will be getting back, um, trying to do that.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, let's move on, Park Board. Um, Gina's not here. Sam, could you please read the report for us?
Yes. The Park Board, uh, last night on July thirty-first, twenty forty-three, all members were in attendance, and also, uh, John Lewis and Mick Wolf, uh, also attended. The meeting started twenty minutes late. A new volleyball, uh, net and, uh, equipment was purchased through the Burke's Club and derived, and is ready for installation at Leeds Park. On Monday, August twenty-first, between seven-thirty and eight AM, H and G Plumbing will be installing a tamper-proof faucet at K K Park. Uh, we're in search of a screw driver for the existing tamper-proof screws on existing appliance, the plumbing company, H and G, wants it. I don't know if anyone knows that. Um. Mick Wolf has cleaned up parks after storms, and has made connection with the Michiana Village, excavated water, uh, restoration of stop thirty-seven. The water should be on as of today. I don't know if you have a update on that or not.
Um, they're working on it. Okay. I just, a little time is on our way. They got it? They actually pulled water off the ground, and we had a full dive.
Okay, sir.
He's working.
Mick has also asked and asked to deliver a court on Bosch limestone, so that he can lay, uh, a layer of, uh, of the stone on nature trail, and that would be, uh, the nature trail between all portal and shadow. We would like to do that, this, do it this year, next year if we have to due to budgetary constraints. The next meeting for the Park Board is August twenty-eighth. Finally, kudos to Teresa Massa, Samantha Arnold, Dutch Ovi, and Terry Ivan for their work on the five-one-one C three, which is, uh, being born for the Booster Club.
Okay, thank you very much for presenting that. Okay, uh, Roads Commissioner, Bob Zokowski.
Two hours worked this month for July of '24. This is that was for tree cleanup and roads. I haven't able to mow the big mower, because there's a steel that just broke, a seal from the mower. I'm trying to get that into depth there. That's it for the street.
All right, thank you very much, Bob.
I think I've written reports on these.
I, most I have, yes. Yes, yes, we have, we have done. I do have them. You know, so far, there, you have received some of them already.
I did receive, Joan, my other received.
Well, jeans is only, we'll give you jeans today, we can make photocopies, okay? But the others, there's three of them I know that you have, and we'll ask Bob for his. Thank you very much. Advisory plan commission, Ralph Box.
Oh, we did not have a meeting this last month, there was nothing on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. No report from Matt Bowen about the BZA unless Dev has any info? Nothing?
No, they did not, they didn't.
Okay, thank you. All right. And their next meeting is this month, correct?
Right, August 24th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, White Ditch, nothing took place regarding Michiana. Sure was a very short meeting this morning, so that's good. Nothing from Samantha regarding the website. And NERC C had a meeting for General NERC C in approving the 2050 plan with a final, you know, approval, and that concerns both, basically, you know, reducing all the pollutants and things that are in the air from the traffic that is in, basically, that passes through this tri-county area. It's a huge thing, because we're such acrossroads here. So, they passed that, and then there was an environmental meeting, which was very good, that was on another day, and there, I have brought back some information, expect a package of more flyers about our encouraging residents here in Michiana Shores to establish native kind of habitats that would be for both bees and butterflies and others. And it's very simple, actually, and then we get, you know, recommend, we get recognition from, from like both the state and the federal governments for the kind of, you know, efforts we take in, in trying to preserve our, our woodlands. So I think that that's a nice thing that would fit in with things that the Booster Club will be doing, the park may be interested in, and we as a town, you know, to maintain our green spaces and, and make sure that we've got a lot of, you know, both birds and all kinds of insects and something, and other animals moving through. So, that was it for the meetings. Now, let's move on to unfinished business. The first one is the approval of the additional cost of the CCG. The total sum was $33,807.66. We brought this up last month, and Joan needed to check and see where these, what sums, what funds is maybe able to come from. Joan, would you like to explain?
Right, first things I can say, it's going to be more than the $33,000 for the additional appropriations or the transfers. It's more likely going to be additional appropriations. We have $10,000, a little over $10,000 for engineering and administration fees that are coming in. I believe there's, and we've had some from John Doyle on the same thing, those will all have to be listed.
John Doyle, but we haven't used him to do something. Yeah, but that was two years ago, not now.
It was 2022.
It was last.
It was last.
Not this year.
Yeah, not last, okay. And it's unpaid from last year?
No, it was paid.
Okay, so that's good.
Part of the, part of.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, okay.
Because we don't have a full number for.
Okay.
I think the way they computed it was on the 476,000, of a 25%, but according to the way the grant people figure, it is on the 332,000 that we were awarded for the grant.
Okay, well, in order for us to get this moving, we need to, you know, approve this $33,807.66, which was on the documents that were presented to us by Global Engineering and by Ruth Riley, their contract presentation. And I have returned the documents to Marsha Lancet, Indiana Department of Transportation, and we will be notified as soon as Ruth Riley has put their plan together, we will be notified of when the work will start. And then, at that time, we will be notifying our residents, and the global engineering firm will have, will provide us a way for residents to actually access and find out more about where something is being moved, what's going to be done on their streets and so forth. So there'll be like, they can find out via text, and there'll be an online, you know, source for more info when that takes place. But we don't know anything yet until we hear from the Ruth Riley. But at this point, we need to approve that $33,807.66.
It'd be easier if we put the $10,000 and some dollars in with the same.
Okay.
Additional appropriation.
So do you have a total sum, Joan?
Well, what Global figured was the $33,000, but there is, like I said, right around $10,000.
Okay.
That is for the engineering prior, and the engineering, when it will be paid.
Okay.
It's your approving it for an additional appropriation. If you approve more, you're fine.
Okay, excellent, okay, thank you.
You buy it instead of the two big busts.
Excellent, so all right, so do we just add the $10,000 then? Is that the suggestion? Or do we add a little bit more than the $10,000?
You can do it two, you can do it two ways. To keep it the same with the contract, you can do your $33,800, and you can also add another line showing they administrative, engineering, and so forth on it.
All right, so then let's.
We don't know if that's concrete or not, what they quoted, that might be for the engineering, right?
The engineering fee should be what they had quoted to us for that.
No, the engineering fee is also showing for the, when it's actually, the payment's actually.
Okay, I think that that's supposed to be worked into the actual contract, though, wasn't it?
Not the way I got it.
No? Okay, well, let's.
If the contract should be both.
All right, then, you know, let's take that suggestion, and let us first approve the, by the two lines, $33,000 and $107.66, and then the additional sum, which would be approximately another $11,000, and that should be able to cover and bring us up to a little bit over, you know, $44,000. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve $44,000.
Yep. Well, it's going to be a little more, could be more than 44, let's say 45 total.
$45,000 total for the additional cost for the CCG project.
I'll say.
All right. Okay, so Sam Paxton has moved, Ralph Box has seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye? Okay, four ayes, and if this additional, these additional costs have been approved. Thank you. All right, now, a second item that moves along together with the work of the grant, and that is going to be tree removal, and per Maple City Trees, the quote that they had provided to us. Bob, I don't have that paper in front of me. I know it was not a large sum. Bob, can you remind us of the sum, or of having Maple City remove the trees for us?
It was $2,500 a day, and you didn't think it was going to take more than two days?
Two days, two, okay.
$2,500 a day?
Yes, per day to remove, and there's quite a bit of, you know.
Times two days, right?
Yes.
What if it's more of a nap?
Well, be another $2,500.
Yeah, because they're charging by the day, and they will be removing these things, correct? Take it, take it down and remove it. Okay. All right, do I have a motion? And you want to say up to three days, or you want to say just two days, and then we'll approve later? But I need a motion from someone.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Bob, I asked you about that before. You said there were no trees that had to be removed.
I don't think there's, there's no trees that are actually in the right of way that he has to take down. Most of it's overgrown, there's some branches that are coming out.
Yeah, so those.
It's two days and two hours.
Well, then maybe we can pro-rate.
That kind of screws.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we need a motion, gentlemen? For the trees?
I was just looking for the quote, Daddy. Can you remember?
No, I do remember the $2,500 per day.
I think, make a motion to approve maple tree service to contract over $2,500 per day, two days.
Okay, very good, okay. I have a motion from Sam Paxton to approve two, two days of removal by Maple City Tree Remove, Tree Service, and I need a second.
Who's second?
Rich Young seconds that motion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so the ayes have it. Okay, and then, if we need to do more, then we'll worry about that going forward. Okay? Now, we also had a tree that needed to be, and that is not included on here, but I do believe that we need to take a look at that. It'll be part of B anyway, or something of B. That tree that needs to be removed from the town property located at almost the very end of Sunset.
Are you betting that?
Well, that's, that's an additional, I'm sticking that underneath. So that is an additional removal. This is not CC, the work for the grant, you know, kind of stuff. This was another tree that is a dead tree, there's a live tree leaning and growing up against it that's going to have to come down together with that.
Where is that?
That is located at, oh my goodness, I forgot the last name, the very end of Sunset. It's the last house on the creek side at Sunset. Heading west, it's on the left-hand side. There is that one home that's right next to Dunland on the other side.
Do we have a quote on that?
Yes, there was a quote on that was.
$2,500.
$2,500, but Bob, now, it was $2,500 for that and for.
And the limb that was hanging down at the corner of Sunset.
Okay, but it did not include the tree that was across the street?
No.
Okay, excellent, okay. All right, so I need a motion to approve, that's $2,500 for the, that's a big tree up there, those trees.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Ralph Box?
From.
Okay, Ralph Box moves to approve.
See the tree, to remove those trees.
Yeah, to remove those trees at the end of Sunset. I need a second?
Second.
Okay, Sam Paxton, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Where was the limb hanging down? I didn't catch that.
Over near the, where Sunset first.
Sunset and, I'll have.
Okay.
Tree that's in the.
Right in the middle of that little.
Okay, that's all right. That gives me enough.
Okay.
But this, there's only one tree though at the end of Sunset.
Well, it's one very dead tree, and then there's another tree that's growing on it.
There's a tree right up against.
Right up against, it's going to have to come down, so.
Two trees.
Two trees, that are going to come down. All right, let's discuss some of the, let's see what this was. Enforcing the fines for those who have violated the STR, and the first one was Peter Cummins. Is there anything to report on that?
So, following the July meeting, we set a cease and desist letter for the board's request. July 12th, that letter went out, received July 18th. I understand from Dev that they have continued to rent since that time. So, obviously, they're not responding to a cease and desist letter. The next step will be litigation, if the board chooses to do so, to be a complaint for adjunctive relief, temporary permanent, adjunctive relief plus damages in the formal files.
Okay.
It would be appropriate if the point to move forward in that direction. We gave them the last opportunity, and they didn't take it.
Okay. Any questions and comments from the council?
The other one is.
It is, yeah, the second house.
3843.
Yeah, 38, it's the second house west, east, no, east of El Portal. Pardon?
It's the house in the middle of the block, sorry.
Yeah, that's right, house in the middle of the block, between Bill Lang and, yes, south side of the road.
South side of Vertre. I said.
Is it working?
They're already getting short-term around it without application for the motion.
Yeah, and he's been doing it for two years or more, probably, and has been notified numerous times, so.
Sighted multiple times, it would be called a cease and desist.
Okay, so, is this something that we need to discuss elsewhere, or we're good to make a decision right now?
Well, I think if the board decides to push to litigation, we're ready to do so. I don't think we need to discuss the details for that.
Okay.
We can add a total fine.
I'm sorry?
Total fine.
Oh, I don't know what the total fines are. Do you have any idea what total fines would be? Have you been keeping track?
It's a long time ago when I put that all together. I think it's close to $10,000.
Even now, it hasn't grown since that time?
Well, you know, we didn't keep citing. So, I can, I can continue to cite.
When we, when we put the complaint together, we'll go by what the ordinance allows as far as typically you're allowed daily fines. So, we'll ask for the appropriate relief and what the court addresses.
Okay, all right. So, I need a motion to approve proceeding forward?
A motion to approve.
Okay, Sam?
I'll second.
All right, Ralph, five seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that is four ayes. Okay. Very good, thank you very much. Now, is anything going to be done further with regards to that carport garage? Or Dev, I'm asking you now, because that's, are you following up with them then?
Right, so that's the one I mentioned during my report.
Right.
They did, the relative daughter of the property owner is apparently a city planner in Texas and wants to do something apparently to go forward, and, and emailed a few times asking questions about setbacks, et cetera.
Okay.
But then, I've heard a thing.
Okay. Well, then, you know, I don't know, I would suggest then that if they don't respond, we need to, you know, send them some other kind of reminder.
Existing fines against?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. There was, you know, a few different issues.
Okay. All right, so.
That was one property I brought forward of the potential nuisance violator. But I think Ralph mentioned that there was already action being taken by the BZA.
That's what Dev has commented, is that they were fined because of the, they didn't finish the garage, they started it.
So it wouldn't be, wouldn't make sense to pursue.
Well, you know, it has been standing there for years and years. It's been there more than four years, five years, something, six?
Which is not a very expensive way to put a dead one on action.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I think that we should move forward and do something like that, because it's, you know, hanging out way too long. And then it has become a nuisance, I think, to those that are around. Because when this first came up, there were neighbors that were complaining about it, so.
All right, is there, is there a way that have you sent in your property owner a notice that we tend to take action if it doesn't resolve it?
Yeah. We already done a legal petition.
Or, no, so maybe, no, right?
No, not, I mean, just a general man, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that'd be a lot, but.
Can you give me like a sound, kind of what you do with companies, and I'll follow up?
We just don't want to repeat what, what's already been done, and guys totally ignore.
Now, this, this is, again, formal letter pre-litigation, and like you said, it was established in their form, the board can decide what they need after that.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then we have, oh, any news on that driveway in the floodway, 103L portal?
No, nothing. So, Joan sent the set report that I had out, that I cast out, but we had been waiting for the DNR, and, and so everything kind of got put on hold. So, they, you know, so it just kind of got, I would say, kind of lost and.
So what happens now? Because that was, so we were adamant of the trying, about doing what they were supposed to do.
Right, so, right now, it would be perhaps a letter saying, and it was, I mean, I did send a media saying this, that the DNR did not approve or expanding the driveway, but then just got no response. So, I mean, perhaps a letter, you know, to that effect.
Yeah.
How much did the authority expand?
I'm sorry?
How much did the expand?
I'd say maybe less than 20%.
But there, the big issue.
Closer to the creek?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that was a big issue, that it's very, it's off the ditch, and they are in the right of way and stuff like that of them, you know.
I think it's pavers, which is better.
Right.
It's pervious, and they ripped out, I think it was a salad, it was allotted before, and replaced with pavers. So, that's a better situation.
All right, let us then, Brad, did you want to say anything about the?
I've just got to follow up with the city attorney, Jim Meyer, like gave, I reached[1786.62] I reached out to after our last meeting, but we haven't really connected anything. Some of that is, he's got his own words to talk to, to see if the district and city's interested in taking ownership of the sewer. Hopefully, I'm not being expelled.
Okay, well, please get in touch with them.
If anything comes up before next month, I'll...
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I just add a thing?
Yes.
You know, one gentleman is hooked up.
I'm sorry?
One person is hooked up.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's right.
Yeah, so, I mean, not the guy who built it, not really.
Right, the guy who was here.
Right here.
Okay, all right, thank you. Under new business, we have 501O Portal, the use and improvement of the access road that is, I missed road here, that is south of their property. So council members, you saw, there was an email about that from Deb, and she showed, said, yeah, owners provided a photo of what it would look like, right, with that, you know, material put down on it, so they basically want to clean up. Can Deb, can you explain a little bit more about this? And then I know we have the owners, I believe, on...
That's true.
Online, okay, so, okay, so do you want to present something, or are we gonna have?
Well, I can just explain, you know, they just really want to put down kind of a, some sort of real material that will hold gravel, and then, you know, gravel in there, so it's, you know, so it's a grave that's not, because right now you walk this cement or gas or whatever kind of dips down.
Okay.
So they just want to make a better grave, and then they'll be removing their fence that's on the south side of their house, and then, you know, then they'll be turning off this new driveway into their lodge. So they need the cars in there.
Okay.
Hi, I wanted to ask a question.
Hi, okay, so you're aware that there's, did you happen to take a look and see where that was at? Council members?
Question I have, is this their property, is it town property?
I believe this is a town access road.
So all residents would be able to use this driveway because it's town property? Are we giving them the property? I don't understand.
No.
They just want to make an improvement on a public piece of property that they will drive across to get to their garage. The other house, why is it...
Because it's town property, other people could use it.
And they get one, right.
Why is it town property? I'm confused on this one.
It's a town access road. That was never paved or, you know, finished off at any time, but it was an access road.
Because it was part of the old farm?
Oh, I don't know, that was...
Next to it.
This is premieres, could be.
East, and then, and you can see it, if you walk out, and it's...
It's not, uh...
No, no, no.
It's terrible to just go out and turn this out.
Between the two homes?
Yes.
So, yeah, and first, the building on the, on the south of that piece of property, he uses it now, they have garage down there, and they drive down and turn into their garage.
Does it belong, it does not belong to 505, it belongs to...
No, it's town property. Yeah, but, yeah, so of course, I need to see it, you go down and you look, and you can see that lines right up with the road that comes from, you know, behind the garage, and you would go this driveway, right here on the side of the town home. It doesn't look like it happens when people sleep, hey, at that one point in time, that your grave had said it's done. There's some asshole down there already.
Okay, so the intention is just to improve it for ease of use for themselves?
Yeah.
Is that good?
Go ahead. Did somebody say something? No?
Yeah, he just repeated.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I guess are there any concerns from a legal perspective?
No, I mean, it's a public roadway, it doesn't look like it's in use, other than the private owners, I mean, it would curve all the way south, and that looks like that's unimproved under there.
Right, yeah, it's a tree, so it's probably not ever, you know, fixed.
So, I mean, I, if those being over cautious, you can ask for a harmless while they're doing it, or whoever they're hiring to do it.
Okay.
Since an incident during the construction, but all of them, they're approving it all.
But as far as the use, data use, it's no different than regarding on public properties.
Okay, so you suggest a whole harmless agreement?
If you're being over cautious.
Okay, how do you feel about that? Do you feel we need one?
It's almost done. Insurance company would probably like that.
All right, insurance company, that's fine. That should be very easy to do.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Would you be able to draw that up for us? Or is that something that we should just...
Are you doing the work yourselves, or you have to contract to do it?
We'll get someone to help bond it and ensure to be doing the work. And we've been working with an architect who's recommended it to reputable companies in the area.
So we'll do it with the architect. I mean, they probably have their own, you know, but if not, I think we don't know.
Okay, all right, so we'll put you in touch with the...
Perfect.
Okay, great, thank you, all right. No more questions out there then? Are we good? Should we have to vote on this? Have we agreed that it's okay for them to improve? All right, so then I need a motion from one of my members here? For, to allow the improving of that unnamed road between those two properties.
I'm not sure they approve.
Okay, Sam Paxton, I need a second on that. Rich Young, seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The attorney, and Mr. Fadens, did you have anything else to say?
I think we've covered just about everything. One area of communication that came up with President Douglas over the last week or so was with elections coming up, there are three candidates slated, three people applying to run, there are obviously five seats in the board, or the council, rather. When that happens, the election will happen, and then after the election, we gotta fill the other two seats. So those seats are filled out of existing board members, it's one of those, if nobody runs, you're tied into a position, but obviously, somebody's gonna be able to step aside from the board, so just have that communication among yourselves, and so it's not a shock come November, December, that we've got a struggle to do a harm wrestling competition to see tomorrow stays one more.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions on that? No? Okay. All right, then if there's no questions, then any other business that board members wanted to bring up? Nothing else, you're all good? Okay.
Three people, huh?
Only three. Yeah. Communications received, anybody got any? Just a minute, you go under public comments, okay?
We need to business.
Business comes under council members bringing something up, okay? And then we can move on to something like that and discuss. Communications received?
Uh, yes, I got a call from a resident, 3820 Iowa, complaining about the tree and their neighbors, 3818 property. They said that the tree had been hit by lightning years ago, and it was dead, and were concerned about limbs falling off of it. I went over and took a look at it. Doesn't look completely dead to me, I mean, it's not super healthy, but it's got a green top, and trunk looks solid.
Well, then...
It's on private property, so it's...
Okay, so...
I had that conversation with the resident.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other com, communication from anybody? I did get inquiries about hooking into the sewer line. There were two different people now that have contacted me with regards to the sewer line, so those are the only communications that I have received. And I did get, you know, communication from another resident on Hiawatha that is very concerned about the deep holes, that it's still gonna take time, and they ask, could you put at least gravel or something into them? So, and we're asking...
Three bags in that hole already.
Yeah, the one closest to the road, to El Portal? Yeah, well, okay, maybe gravel, I don't know what, but there is, I'm just reporting that there were, you know, you know, requests on that. Now, we move on to public comment, please.
Okay, there's several trees from the last one, and we've taken action as well on the portal, that the top has blown out and is hanging precariously on the side of the road. Think that should be taken care of quickly, or probably, one or two hundred yards off the portal on the, to the west side of the street, you can see it, it's almost, the leaves are starting to turn, it's, it's hanging down, it's...
Is it before the nature park?
Yes, it's before, between here and the nature park.
Oh, here.
Okay.
That's on town property? Yes, it pretty is on town property, but still, it has to be a big, because it is broad, and it is a hazard. Okay, it's right there, it's lining the street, so...
Okay.
It, it does have a potential of breaking off, and then it would probably bounce once, and then into the street it goes. So there, there is a lot of talk about the Mulberry tree that is cleaned up on the coffee side, but the other side of the streets needs to be cleaned out and cleaned up. You know, all these storm damaged little, old hanging fruit needs to be taken care of.
Okay, all right, well, we'll have to, we're gonna be taking a ride to take a look at all of these, those trees and others, within the next two days, so. Any other, anything else you wanted to point out?
Well, I mean, there are, I think, we should talk to, maybe it's 403O Lender, across the street from Bigger Stacks, they have a tree that took out the power, it's all in a big lump sum on that property, and find out which way they're gonna go on it, if that should be taken care of, because this is gonna start interfering in the road, because then, you know...
Okay, all right, well, I'm glad you're giving these things, because as I...
There's several, there's several big piles of brush that need to be removed.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Diana?
Yes, Rich?
I was gonna bring this up under our comments, but it's, it's kind of like the unofficial liaison for the pathways for the board. There is money, right, young, four young trees that we, we put in the budget.
Right.
And we've had them clean these things up before, like coffees, even though, well, they're close to the back. And then the one on El Portal was one on the east side too. Laying, I mean, it's, uh...
Well, I think something should be done to look, you know, not so much to exceed, but to wait till next council meeting, especially with this one dang one up in the tree. I think there's a little beautification. Sam's wife has been, been going around, you know, getting on, you know, wanting answers, and think, just, let's just get this little stuff done. I mean, it's probably under a thousand bucks, you can go around and chip it up and cover it up and be done with it. You don't have to use any airbrushed device, it's just, just get it done.
Okay.
The next meeting's gonna be September, we got Labor Day coming before that, it's, it's...
Well, I think there, again, what Rich said, I was gonna bring up the idea that we do have a problem, there was comments out on an actual, and we're getting a collection of these trees that have fallen, remember, and Bob and the team, and everyone on the first responders are out there doing their jobs, and appreciate all their efforts on that. But at some point, these massive logs and tree trunks that are sitting there, very close to the roadway, it's not, it's something that has to be done at some point. Now, you know, if you, if you have a solution, Mick, that costs a thousand dollars, chip off everything, it'd be time, they'll sign, they'll sign you up today. Just because it's near the road, because there's, there's a lot.
There, there is a lot, but I think just to get some of these little ones, down El Portal, the ones down on Shadow there, and some of these real ice swords.
There's some on Iowa.
You know, I already collect on some in front of, on the corner of the channel. And El Portal had to be done already, we have to build it for it, but it was right there in the corner, it had to be cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you for those comments, and they are very valuable. I have an issue, though, with cleaning a property that belongs to somebody else. Okay, and paying for it, I have a very big issue with that. So if a tree or a branch has fallen down off of the property, whatever, let's say it's 3850, okay, I'm just giving whatever, okay, and it fell down, the owners of 3850 should be taking care of the branches that came down, whether it's empty or not. So what we need to do is encourage those homeowners, that they take care of the things that have come down as well. I understand that, you know, they may not look, it may look unsightly, like the two that were mentioned on Hiawatha, those on private property, three of them, okay, that's all on private property, because there are no MT or town lots on Hiawatha in that area where those three are down. So those should be handled by those homeowners. So I don't like, yeah, just a minute, please, of those people, you know, paying for that. Now, my second comment is, monies that we, that the town has to spend for the ditches, we're responsible to make sure that the, that the trees that we take care of, that we have money for the trees that may go into the ditch. So that doesn't mean that we can use that money to pay for trees that are on El Portal or anywhere else. You know?
In the Jones, she said that when that money was budgeted, it was for the path and...
And streets.
And all the trees and the streets?
And streets at that time. We've been carrying them for six, seven years.
And that's because, the concern would be if something is happening with the ditch, we're responsible for taking care of that.
I know in my area, I have my nephew clean up all the stuff from my property up to the top of the hill and a little bit around. Now, I've got a big beef about El Portal and Old Dale, as you're turning right off of Old Dale, you have tree branches down that are hitting cars. You have to go, if you're going...
Yes, I understand, Joan.
That's terrible, we need to take something about that, and now, who's gonna take care of stuff like that?
Okay, well, that, that is an issue, and that's something that we're gonna be looking at addressing. But the things that are on private property, again, have to be done by homeowners, and if we, if we start cutting all of that down, we're gonna incur enormous expenses for the town that we won't be able to pay. So what I already have, where I'm gonna be driving around with our road commissioner, and gonna be taking notes as to where all of this kind of stuff is. We're doing a drive around on Thursday. Anybody, I don't know how many people can fit into the vehicle, but we're going for a ride, and we're going to be making notes and lists and so forth. Because I do want to ask homeowners to please be responsible for your own properties, clean them up, you know, clean your trees, clean your branches and so forth. Yes, Sam?
Okay, two things. The first thing, as far as if it's on a private homeowners, it's their tree, it's not in the easement, the town has nothing to do with it, but it's impacting, it's close to this, it's fallen close to the street, which I can think of a couple that are just going out in the port like that. We do have nuisance elements, and that, to me, the fun is, it rises to the level of a nuisance, okay? The second point is, this is not, look around, I mean, these trees are all very mature, they're gonna keep falling, and we're gonna continue to have these problems. We need to address it with a solution that we can, we can take care of much of what is owned up, we own how many lots? A lot of lots, okay, and a lot of them are on public roads. So when those trees fall, it becomes the town's issue, regardless of, you know, it's our property, it's our tree, it's our problem.
Obviously.
So we need to invest in something that's gonna help us, and I think Bob Sokowski has come up with a solution that will help. It's not gonna be a pure all, it's not gonna take care of big massive tree trunks, but it will help us move them off the freeway and off the, out of the ditch, and, and take care of putting about six, eight inch type limbs and branches, this, this vehicle or mower, mowter, what is it?
Flail.
Flail, flail mower, that will grind up those types of limbs. And it's something that we're gonna have to continue to, to figure out what, what the best solution is. But that seems to me, it didn't hit the budget in time, but Joan, there is a way that we can purchase equipment and lease it. I'm not familiar with the state regulations.
Right, whatever you decide, I need to bypass that to our accountant. We, we're spending quite a bit of money on the roads, and there's a couple other issues, so I don't know how much excess money we have to find yet to have a contract for so many years to pay for it. So I will have to get with the accountant on that. So I will have to get with the accountant on that. I'm not making a decision. I understand the outlay is pretty heavy on it. What I was wondering is if we need immediate help, why can't we see about contracting our situation out right now and see if we can...
That may be an issue, but you're paying them profit.
That's okay.
Twenty-five hundred dollars and it's not, you know, it's all...
Twenty-five hundred dollars for what?
Twenty-five hundred dollars for maple to, to just trim back.
No, I'm talking about the machine. I'm talking about the machine that comparing a machine that's going to maybe sit in a garage and only be used, you know, three, four times a year. That has to be investigated and we can't do that tonight at a meeting. That's something that...
We're not talking about the limited term.
These are just comments, these are not decisions.
I understand that.
I'm advocating that town needs to do something.
Thank you.
Spend money one way or another.
Okay, yeah. That's a very good thought, thank you. I'm sorry, Joan?
Also give a request, property owners, clean up their properties.
Yes.
You need to show the example.
Yes. Oh, no, absolutely. Just a minute, Joan, we have Mick.
The attorney can help me out with this because we talked about this. When trees fall, no matter, we can't tell unless you obviously say it doesn't matter. Then we can contact the homeowner. But it is an act of God. When a storm comes in and the top of a tree or the tree blows over, it comes down to the town. Once it crosses our easement, it's our problem. And we just can't push it off until the homeowner, because the homeowner, there was not a problem with it, it was an obvious problem. It was the man upstairs.
Mick, thank you.
We're stuck as taxpayers dealing with that problem.
Mick, thank you for, for that comment. Okay, we're not going to discuss who's going to be responsible, who's not on that now. And I thank you for the comment. Alright, now, we had, I don't know whether we would consider having this cleanup that Mick mentioned. Do you want to go back and, and discuss this and approve something? Or do you want to hold off on that? What are you going to do? What do you feel like doing?
Wait until you and Bob go on.
We're going out on Thursday, Thursday afternoon to drive around.
Because you'll make a report of some sort.
Yeah.
And make sure you identify the worst ones to include the list. And we'll get estimates from folks that there is.
Yeah.
And I think we move ahead.